Having reached the date and hour designated in the warrant for the May 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting, I hereby call the meeting to order. My name is Amy Kular and I am the Bourne Town Meeting Moderator. Mr. Town Clerk Barry Johnson, how many voters have been checked into this town meeting?
Two hundred and ninety-eight.
He responds, "Two hundred and ninety-eight registered voters." I declare there is a quorum present. Madam Stenographer, please note for the record that the... Oh, Mr. Town Clerk, has the annual town meeting warrant been duly posted as required by law?
Yes, it has.
Madam Stenographer, please note for the record that the town clerk responds that the warrant has been duly posted. Will everyone please silence your cellphones? And those who can, please stand and remain standing until I ask you to resume your seats. Thank you. Please join me now in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please now let us offer a special moment of silence to those brave men and women who serve our nation in the public safety, military, and intelligence services at home and abroad, and for those town employees who have passed away since the last town meeting. Thank you. You may be seated. I recognize Peter Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We're here for a point of personal privilege.
You may go ahead. You have the floor, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. Select Board Member Robert W. Parity. Both who were very instrumental here in this community. They did a lot for us with Tom being a former state rep, a former undersecretary, a master thought, and then ultimately a general manager of the Kidcard Regional Transit Authority, and then with Bob Parity being an attorney of law here in this community for many years, and former select board sewer commissioner, assessor, and then eventually the moderator and other boards and committee. Both were very influential and did a lot for this community, and they just want you to... I just wanted to give them some public recognition since both have now passed on. So, thank you for your time, Madam Moderator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Meyer. All right, thank you for that. What is going to happen now is I'm going to provide you all with a lot of information for the next few minutes, so please bear with me. We are going to go over some housekeeping matters and use our voices to vote on two motions that keep the town meeting business moving along smoothly. We are also going to do a quick vote, mock vote, with our electronic voting devices. When I ask for the motions during the next few minutes, we are, as I said, we are going to conduct them by voice. These are routine motions and in keeping with the longtime practice in Bourne. I am explaining this now because at my first town meeting as moderator, it was also a town meeting with a high-interest article, and there were a lot of first-time attendees here. If this is your first or your fiftieth meeting, you are welcome here tonight. Thank you for being here with us. Also, I just want to give everyone the awareness that at annual town meeting, in about twenty minutes, I'm going to call for a motion to recess the annual town meeting, and we are going to move as close to 7:30 as we can get. We will then convene the special town meeting, which has five articles. And after the special town meeting business is concluded, we will return back to the annual town meeting. I just wanted everyone to be on the same page so you understand what's happening in a few minutes. I have appointed Wendy Weston as my deputy moderator. Wendy is seated in front of the stage in front of me. If you need help with a motion or other matter, please see Wendy. Seated in front of you on the stage, on my right, first in the back there is the Finance Committee. I have a town clerk and a deputy town clerk. On my left is this town council, and I have the select board here. The first two roads on my left, on the left side of the auditorium, have been reserved for the town administrator and town staff and department heads. Does everyone have a voter handbook? If you do not have a voter handbook, please raise your hand and a teller will bring you one. Does every registered voter have an electronic voting device? If not, please raise your hand and a teller will bring you one. At this time, we are now going to go through the electronic voting system. So when you checked in, you were given a handset. This handset is for voting, and it is issued to you and only you. Using a handset issued to someone else is strictly forbidden. Before each vote, I will announce the emotion or amendment being decided. I'll then announce the beginning of a thirty-second voting interval when you will vote via your handset. To vote yes on any question, you will press the green button, and to vote no, you will press the red button. If you accidentally push the wrong button, you can switch your vote by pressing the correct button. If you don't want to participate in a vote, don't push any buttons. When the thirty-second voting interval is closed, I will announce that voting is closed, and shortly thereafter, I will announce the results of the vote. If you have to temporarily leave your seat during this meeting and exit the auditorium, please leave your handset with the exit desk staff in the rear. They will return your handset to you and reissue it to you when you return to the auditorium, and especially tonight when leaving the auditorium at the conclusion of business this evening. Please make sure to place your handset in one of the bins at the exit desk. Okay. Now, we are going to do a practice vote to make sure that everyone here is comfortable with operating their handset. It is going to be green for yes and red for no. The first question that we are deciding tonight, Bourne, is, "Will the Celtics repeat as NBA champions this season?" Green for yes, red for no. They are playing right now. You may begin voting. That was thirty seconds. Voting is now closed. I declare that the Celtics will repeat his championship by a vote of 123 to 18. Thank you. I am informed by the select board that if this town meeting does not conclude this evening, that is, their intention to move that it recess and reconvene tomorrow evening here at seven. This town meeting is governed by Robert's Rules of Order as interpreted by the book Town Meeting Time. I am going to spare everyone now my reading of the moderator's rules, which you will find at the beginning of the voter handbook. I will address parliamentary matters as they arise during the course of the meeting. When an article is called and you intend to speak on that article, please leave your seat and come down to the front and sit near one of the two microphones so I may recognize you. You will have up to three minutes and thirty seconds to speak. My deputy is keeping time for me. If at any time during the debate of the articles, if I determine that there are numerous individuals wishing to speak on an article, I may reduce the time allotted to each speaker during that debate. One thing I do not tolerate at all are personal attacks or other similar behavior from a speaker. You will be declared out of order, and in accordance with Massachusetts law, you may be removed from the meeting by the sergeant-at-arms and confined until the conclusion of the session. When speaking, please speak only to the motion on the floor. Don't be repetitive. Be concise and to the point. This meeting is being videotaped for later televising on the local Comcast Cable access channel. There is a stenographer down front on my right keeping an official written transcript of the proceedings. As a matter of longtime custom and usage within the town of Bourne, it is solely within the moderator's discretion to allow non-voters to address the town meeting. If anything interferes with your ability tonight to hear, speak, or participate in the town meeting to your satisfaction, you may interrupt the meeting by declaring a point of personal privilege, and your concern will be heard and addressed. If you need to speak from your seat, please get Wendy's attention or my attention, and we will get you a portable microphone. We are now going to conduct two votes by voice. At this time, I will entertain a motion that this meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant and of the constable's return of service of that warrant, and that the moderator not be required to read resolutions or warrant articles verbatim, but may refer to them instead by article number and/or page number in the handbook. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of allowing me to dispense with the reading of the warrant, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please say nay. I declare it was unanimous. I declare the ayes have it. I am also informed by the board, the select board, that there is a Bourne Rule Resolution. This resolution is printed on page 134 of your handbook. Madam Chair of the Select Board, I'll entertain your motion to adopt the proposition two-and-a-half resolution as printed in the voter handbook.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second onstage. Thank you very much. All those in favor of dispensing with... Wait, I'm so sorry. All those in favor of the Bourne Rule Resolution as printed in 134 of your handbook, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please say no. I declare the ayes have it. I declare it was unanimous. All right. This last question is directed to the Chair of the Finance Committee and the Select Board Chair. If all of the recommended articles in the annual town meeting that require raising and appropriating of funds are passed, will the town be at their maximum levy limit?
Yes.
They both responded in the affirmative. All right. I am informed by the town administrator, in accordance with Section 1.1.9 of the town bylaws, there are articles which the select board and the finance committee have each voted are essential to the exercise of the town's corporate functions. These articles are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 20, 22, and 23. All other articles of this annual town meeting will be drawn by lottery. With that, I will ask you now to proceed to Article 1, which is on page 17 of your voter handbook, and requires a simple majority vote. All right. Does the select board have a positive motion? I know you have one.
We move that the town vote to approve the use of a consent agenda, including each of the articles set forth in the warrant in Article 1, and further that the town vote to approve Article 1 as set forth in the warrant, and further that with respect to Article 1, items 1, 2, 5, 2, and including 5, to transfer 200,000 from free cash to fund costs related to payments for accrued contractual compensated absences.
Mrs. Zarebitz, you have the floor.
The items listed in the consent agenda recur annually and are in housekeeping in nature. A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would approve all consent articles at one time and authorize a cost-of-living allowance, COLA, increase of 2.5% for the town clerk, town moderator, and select board members. The revolving fund spending limits remain the same as the prior fiscal year. The compensated absences funding is proposed to be increased by 100,000. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean the town meeting would vote on the items individually. The select board recommendation, it voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Tom Joyce.
The finance committee voted unanimously 7-0-0 to recommend approval of the notice.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 1? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article 1. Does everyone have your handheld device? This vote requires a simple majority. When I tell you you may begin voting, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote, green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board is passed with 264 votes in favor and 25 opposed. We will now move to Article 2 on page 20 of your handbook. Article 2 on page 20 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the select board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Select Board Chair Mary Jane Mistrangelo.
We move that the sum of $81,845,965 be hereby appropriated from the funding sources listed below to defray the expenses of the municipal town departments in the chart entitled, "These amounts are to be voted," as shown below, "for the fiscal year starting on July 1, 2025, to and including June 30, 2026." Funding sources: Raise and appropriate from the FY '26 tax levy and other general revenues of the town, $79,541,032. PL-874 grant funds, $175,000. Ambulance fund, $1,500,000. Conservation commission receipts reserved for appropriation, $30,000. Community preservation fund revenues for debt expense, $205,925. Community septic management program, $10,008. Waterway improvement fund, $140,000. Capital stabilization for debt expense, $344,000, for a total of $81,845,965. These amounts are to be voted. General government, $4,663,472. Public safety, $13,842,828. Public works, $3,739,888. Health and human services, $1,051,439. Culture and recreation, $1,097,554. Bourne Public Schools, $27,718,638. Upper Cape Cod Regional Technical High School, $4,091,118. Shared costs, $20,520,998. Debt service, $5,120,30, for a total of $81,845,965.
You have the floor.
Thank you. The proposed FY '26 budget maintains a level service budget compared with last year. The proposed appropriation for the FY '26 operating budget is an increase of 3.29% over the previous year's appropriation. On the expenditure side, one new full-time inspector is proposed to be added to the building department. The majority of the increases are due to contractual increases for employees based on new contract negotiations and increases from service vendors. The initial budget included $520,000 for contract negotiations with the unions, with all of the employee unions. New contracts have been approved with several unions which have been incorporated into the budget. Contract negotiations with other unions are ongoing, and $264,994 of salary reserve is included in the budget for those negotiations. On the revenue side, as in previous years, capital stabilization funds are a proposed funding source to help offset debt payments. In order to meet the budgetary increase of 3.29%, there have been increases in the budgeted host community fee from ISWAM, increases in estimates for state aid and other local receipts, increase in investment, estimated investment returns, and a decrease in the amount set aside for future OPEB liabilities. Some of these increases or decreases will not be available to offset future budget increases. A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would approve the general fund operating budget for FY '26 from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean there would be no approved operating budget for FY '26. The select board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion on Article 2.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on Article 2? I recognize Dan Deegan.
The finance committee voted unanimously 6-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 2? You may approach the podium. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Sandra Goldstein Katomet.
Thank you.
I just have a question about the memorandum of understanding between Bourne and Wareham. Years ago, I think we sent our sewage to them. They had to repair and upgrade their system.
That's not from the general fund operating budget. That would be related to the sewer budget, which is a separate article.
Are we still paying on that, by the way?
That'll be...
Are we still paying?
That's not an answer. That doesn't have to do with this...
Article 3 is coming up, and that is the sewer department budget, so I would ask you to...
I heard that.
So you can return... I'm going to ask you to return to the podium for that one.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Goldstein. Is there any further discussion on Article 2? Hearing none, we can move to a vote now on Article 2. This vote requires a simple majority vote. When I let you know, you can... You will have thirty seconds to cast your vote, green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board is passed with 295 votes in favor, 26 opposed. Thank you. At this time, I would look for a motion to enter this... I think, I don't think we can get through three. Should we try? All right. We have seven minutes. I'm going to try for Article 3. Article 3 is on page 22 of your voter handbook. Article 3 on page 22 requires a simple majority vote. Does the select board have a positive motion?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti.
We move the sum of $1,713,193 be authorized to be expended by sewer commissioners for the operation of the sewer system for the fiscal year starting on July 1, 2025, to and including June 30, 2026, as follows. Salaries and wages, $238,465. Expenses, $1,374,728. Reserve fund, $100,000. And we further move that the sum of $168,484 be transferred to the general fund to offset sewer enterprise indirect expenses, and in order to meet this appropriation, we move that the sum of $1,781,677 be raised from sewer enterprise receipts and 100,000 be transferred from sewer retained earnings.
You have the floor.
A yes or aye vote in favor of this motion would approve the sewer enterprise operating budget for FY '26 from July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that there would be no approved sewer enterprise operating budget for FY '26. The select board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Amanda Bon Giovanni.
The finance committee voted unanimously 6-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion now on Article 3? I recognize Sandra Goldstein.
Sandra Goldstein, yes. I take it this is the place that that money is...
You are here at Article 3, yes, the sewer budget.
I guess we borrowed... We were obligated to pay a certain amount of the upgrade that Wareham had to do to their sewer treatment plant, extensive... They were pushing sewage that wasn't quite filtered into the Agawam River, and Bourne has a memorandum of understanding to send our sewage to them. We still do, I believe, so many gallons, in addition to our own sewer system. And we, I think it was six and a half million dollars was our obligation, and I just wonder where that stands, how much we pay, or is it paid off, or who do we pay it to?
Thank you. We're looking for the status of the memorandum of understanding between Wareham and Bourne.
Thank you. I'm going to have Madam Town Administrator.
I will recognize, yes, Marlene McCollum.
So, we are still paying on that. The charges have just begun, and that is, I believe, a 20-year note? And what is our annual payment?
So, our payment appropriated for fiscal '26, $130,548. This is the current debt that's due.
We're going to repeat it, I promise. She's not at a microphone, so the town administrator is gonna... They're talking to each other, so... We're all here. Go ahead.
The payment for FY '26 is $130,548, which will be paid to the town of Wareham.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want a follow-up question?
How long is that payment? I think you were saying how long the note was or whatever. How many years?
Twenty.
Twenty years.
And we still send sewage, 200,000 gallons a day, to Wareham?
Yes. The town of Bourne has the ability to send 200,000 gallons a day of sewage.
And do they?
We don't meet the 200,000 gallons every day, no.
Thank you.
This may not be related or allowed. How many more? What is the capacity of our system, and how much left do we have? Is that... It may not be appropriate question.
Yeah, that's not relevant to the budget if Ms. McCollum knows off the top of her head. Otherwise, I'm going to ask that we move on. Is that all right with you? Thank you.
It's relevant to a budget.
I know it's relevant. Not in this very specific...
The Buzzards Bay Sewage Plant can treat 100,000 gallons per day.
100,000 gallons per day the Buzzards Bay Sewage Plant can treat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on Article 3? Hearing none, we can move to a vote now on Article 3. This vote requires a simple majority. Does everyone have their handheld device? When I let you know, you will have thirty seconds to cast your vote, green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board is passed with 298 in favor and 27 opposed. All right. At this time, I would entertain a motion that we recess the annual town meeting and move into the special town meeting. Do I have that motion? I have the motion from MJ. Do I have a second? Second from the select board, thank you. All those in favor of recessing the annual town meeting and proceeding into the special town meeting, this is a voice vote, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. It is unanimous. We are now going into... We are now going into special town meeting. All the special town meeting articles will be drawn by the lottery. So there's a little bit of business, I do have to say, to open the special town meeting, but not quite everything I said at the beginning of annuals. So please bear with me. Having reached the date an hour designated in the warrant for the May 5th, 2025 special town meeting, I hereby call the meeting to order. Mr. Town Clerk, how many voters have checked into this special town meeting? The town clerk responds 325. I declare there is a quorum present. Mr. Town Clerk, has the special town meeting warrant been duly signed and posted as required by law?
Yes, it has.
He responds in the affirmative. Wendy is still my deputy moderator. She is still seated in front of the stage. She will help you with a motion or any other matter that you may have during the special town meeting. Please make sure your cell phones are still silent. Does everyone have a voter handbook? Last chance. If not, please raise your hand, and the tellers will bring you one. I will entertain a motion at this time to dispense with the reading of the warrant and the constable's return of service of that warrant, and that the moderator not be required to read warrant articles verbatim, but may refer to them instead by article number.
No.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of allowing me not to have to read the warrant to you aloud, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I declare it was unanimous. All right. We will now move to the first article of the special town meeting, which the town clerk is going to draw by lottery. The first article is Article 5. Article 5 on page 14 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Anne Marie Sarunian.
We move that the town vote to establish an opioid settlement receipts special revenue fund as authorized by Chapter 77 of the Acts of 2023N, further to transfer $143,423.82 from the opioid settlement fund general article to said opioid settlement receipts special revenue fund.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Massachusetts received in excess of $900 million with respects to the opioid settlement fund. Forty percent of that monies is being distributed among municipalities across Massachusetts. Bourne has received some of those funds, and they get dispersed on an annual basis. This is basically a housekeeping rule where the Commonwealth voted to change the law to allow funds to be placed in a special revenue fund as opposed to having to come each year to town meeting to allocate the monies. So that's basically what's happening here in this article. A yes or I vote in favor of the motion will move the remaining funds out of the general fund article and place them in a special revenue fund. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would maintain the status quo, and the funds would remain in the general fund article. The Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Finance Committee Chair Jim Sullivan.
Hi. The Finance Committee voted 7-0 in favor of this.
Thank you. All right. Is there any discussion on Article 5? Go right ahead.
Excuse me. My name is Bill Doherty. I come from Kalamet.
You have the floor, Mr. Doherty.
Thank you. My only... I'm in favor of this article. I've been in favor of this article, and this money has been here for some time. Who is going to be the implementing department within the town to apply these funds?
The Department of Health.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions on Article 5? Hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 5. This vote requires a simple majority. When I let you know, you will be able to begin voting. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 292 votes in favor and 30 The next article in the special town meeting is Article 1. Article 1 on page 10 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
Yes, we do.
I recognize MJ Mastrangelo.
We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $200,000 for the purposes of this article, and to meet this appropriation, to transfer the sum of $200,000 from free cash.
Ms. Mastrangelo, you have the floor.
Thank you. Nitrogen is, number one, pollutant affecting coastal water quality. About 80% of the nitrogen in Cape Cod's watersheds is from septic systems. The town of Bourne's comprehensive wastewater management plan looks at ways to reduce nitrogen pollution and improve coastal water quality. CWMPs are required by the Cape Cod 208 Plan and typically take three to four years to complete. Our plan is taking a little bit longer due to changes in Title V regulations for nitrogen-sensitive areas. The town appropriated $600,000 at the fall special town meeting in 2020 to begin work on the comprehensive wastewater management plan. The Board of Sewer Commissioners contracted with a consulting firm, and work on the CWMP began in the spring of 2021. Since that time, there have been new Title V regulations implemented that affect what septic systems will be required in the future nitrogen-sensitive areas. There have been multiple public meetings and presentations in recent years during the development of the plan, and a draft CWMP was submitted to DEP in January. However, the work is not complete. An additional funding is needed to complete the plan and to consider watershed permits. A yes or I vote in favor of the motion would provide up to $200,000 of additional funding to continue working on the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan and to explore the option of seeking watershed permits from MAST DEP. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean there would be no funding to continue with the CWMP planning efforts, and no additional work would occur with respect to this effort. The Select Board voted four in favor and one opposed to recommend approval of the motion on Article 1.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Hi, Madam Moderator. Yes, we do.
I recognize Carla Emmons.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 7-0-0 to approve this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 1? Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Seaver.
Seaver, I'm a resident of Kalamet. And I note that the reason this is having to be redone is because the state rejected our CWMP proposal for two reasons: the data it used and the lack of outreach to environmental justice populations. I recommend that we do not spend any more money on the CWMP until we have seen that the Massachusetts estuary project assessment is redone. They have ruled that Squitig and McGansett, for example, are nitrogen-impaired. I recommend that we go that route for the following reasons. Myself and another in Kalamet have been measuring and analyzing components of the estuary, Squitig Harbor and Scotch House Cove since 1988. We do it year-round. We have conveyed this to the public through five papers and scientific journals. And our conclusions do not agree with what the MEP and the CWMP state. They have not made any measurements. We make them. I just finished one a month ago. There are many disagreements. For instance, the 80% of the nitrate in the harbor, that's no... That is way off from what we find. But anyway, the biggest one, I believe, is that they're based on other people's data between 1995 and 2015. We, of course, have gone right up until 2025. And since 2015, major changes have occurred in the sources of nitrate coming into estuaries. And that's one of our major goals that we've done over this long period of time. One of them, just because this is generally known by... Agreed upon by almost everybody, is atmospheric deposition. Every time it rains, it rains with nitrate in it. That has diminished significantly by 60%. And that was not at all considered in this because they didn't look at data after 2015. If... Oh, yeah. One of the sources of nitrate, the second biggest source of nitrate we found was from the Falmouth Sewerage Treatment Plant. Between 2017 and 2020, it failed, just like Wareham's has. They're tricky business, these plants. And when it failed, it let all of the nitrate go into West Falmouth Harbor. And it was a huge amount of increase. And as the tide went in and out, it came back into Squitig Harbor and Red Brook Harbor. It wasn't as big because it had been somewhat diluted, but it was the second biggest source of nitrate we found in all that, all those years.
That's 3 and 1/2 minutes, Mr. Seaver. Thank you so much. Thank you. That's time. Would anyone else like to be heard on this article?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, I recognize Steve Mealy.
Stephen Mealy from Sagamore Beach. For those of us who are unfamiliar with the comprehensive wastewater management plan, it covers five coastal invasions within the town of Bourne, all located on the Buzzards Bay side. Not just Squitig and McGansett Harbor, which we have just heard about, but also Buzzards Bay, Buttermilk Bay, Finney's, Monument Beach Harbor, and the Pecassett River, Pecassett Harbor. The plan was developed, as was previously stated, by the Board of Sewer Commissioners and the Wastewater Advisory Committee. The plan, as it exists today, proposes an almost complete townwide use of innovative alternative IA septic systems. These systems are installed by the individual homeowners at their expense on their property. There is limited seoring within the proposal, depending on the wastewater treatment plant's ability located at the school, being expanded or updated. Based on a review by the Cape Cod Commission, such reliance on our plan utilizing the IA septic system fails to attain the needed nutrient reduction requirements. Specifically, the commission reviewed the target nitrogen loads for Finney's Harbor and demonstrated discrepancy on the removal to meet requirements by the plan. The town needs additional work to evaluate other alternative approaches that have not been evaluated sufficiently. It has been rejected by the state and returned for additional work to us. The use of the IA system should be limited to facilitate their use where other alternatives cannot be. Such a regional system approach should also include working with Falmouth to address using a watershed permit for Squitig and McGansett Harbor invasion, working with Sandwich, and possibly with the Joint Base Cape Cod, utilizing the wastewater treatment plant at Joint Base Cape Cod. Continue to work with Wareham. Bourne currently has an IMU, an intermunicipal agreement program with Wareham, but only for existing seoring system in Buzzards Bay. This is currently near its maximum, but expansion of the system is being explored. The rework of the plan needs to be considered for these alternatives in much greater detail and analysis. And other communities have developed plans to address, as Bourne has done in Buzzards Bay, by working with wastewater solutions together with other towns. The plan does provide the basis for the suggested rework needed. The need to address the shortcomings outlined above are not insurmountable. To meet a goal of supplying the immediate watershed permits for the town, should consider that work first. For the town of Bourne to properly address our wastewater issues as required by the state, the significant costs incurred will have profound impact on its residents and taxpayers and homeowners. This plan could be improved to meet those needs. The plan should specifically recommend that watershed permits be applied for, and a notice of intent needs to be filed by this July, 2025. I would ask you to strongly support the article to review complete Bourne's wastewater treatment plan and allow the work to be finalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy.
Thank you, Madam.
Would anyone else like to be heard on this article? Go right ahead.
Keith Barber from Pecassett, the vice chair of the Bourne Wastewater Advisory Committee. And this is a very simple situation. We're way behind getting this done, and we need this money to continue the process. So please support this article. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, Ms. Goldstein.
A point of clarification. I think it was Mr. Seaver indicated that the CWMP we submitted was rejected by the DEP, by the state. Could you... Why was that? Why was it rejected?
You can ask a town official, but Mr. Seaver can't answer questions.
He can't?
No.
No. I bet he could, but he won't. Could the town answer that?
So I'm going to allow...
Why was it rejected?
What is your question specifically for Ms. Mastrangelo?
The question is, why was the CWMP, that comprehensive wastewater management plan, rejected by the state?
Thank you.
So I would say the plan was not outright rejected by the state. The process is that we submit a plan. It goes through a public comment period. We received the comments from MAST DEP and from the public on March 3rd. The consultants that drafted the plan with us have been working on responses to all of the concerns raised during the public comment period. They are scheduled to provide their draft comments to the Select Board by May 9th. And the Select Board has scheduled a workshop meeting at 3 o'clock on Wednesday afternoon, May 28th, to discuss the comments on the CWMP and the response from our consultants.
Thank you.
Okay. Just to clarify that, the comments weren't addressed, so that was why it was... There were concerns about that from the state? And they're going to have another meeting and go over those concerns? Sorry. Is that the point? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that DEP made comments on the draft plan, and the public made comments on the draft plan. So now all of the comments that were made on the draft plan are being reviewed and will be discussed by the Select Board at our meeting on May 28th. The issue that we have and the reason that we're asking for additional funding is that the original contract with the consultants was up through the drafting of the draft comprehensive wastewater management plan, and for them to respond to the comments that were made. And so in order to proceed with a consultant from this point forward, we need to have additional funding to pay the consultant's fees.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
I'm not sure.
Okay. We're going to move on. We have someone else here at the podium. So I'm going to go ahead.
Liam DeCaroless, Monument Beach.
You have the floor, Mr. DeCaroless.
Thank you very much. My question is very simply, what happens if we don't? What happens if we just don't do this, and we stop right where we are?
Then on July 8th of 2025, I believe is the date, the town of Bourne would not have filed a notice of intent for watershed permits. And anyone who lives in a nitrogen-sensitive area will be responsible for replacing their current Title V septic system with an IA system by July of 2030. Any new construction is already required to put in a new IA system.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
You may ask a follow-up. Go ahead.
So is the intent... So is the intent of the study to come up with alternatives to having all the waterfront or affected area residents have to pay for this?
So, up until this point, the Select Board has not made a decision to file the watershed permits that would give us 20, up to 20 years to make these changes. I, I think it will be a topic for the Select Board to discuss at their workshop on May 28th. I think that we have asked for clarification from Mast DEP on what filing, what enforcement is with a watershed permit, and what enforcement is without a watershed permit. And I have heard back from Southeast Massachusetts DEP that they will have a representative at our May meeting, on May 28th, to discuss this with the Select Board.
Thank you very much.
Does that answer all your questions?
It did, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Is it, okay.
The date, May 9th?
May 28th is the date for the workshop.
Right.
May 9th is the date where the consultants are targeted to provide us with their responses to the comments on the draft CWMP.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. We're going to move to a vote now. I don't see any further discussion on this article unless anyone else would like to be heard. Go right ahead. Step up. That's you.
Katie Martin, North Falmouth, but I also co-own a property with my mom in Borne.
Okay. You're, you're not a Borne voter?
That's why I held this up.
Okay, I can't, I, I haven't given you permission to speak, but you are a Borne property owner, so I just want to state for the record she is not a voter, and I will allow it. Go ahead.
I just want to add a follow-up comment about the ramifications for if we don't move forward with further looking into applying for the watershed permit. So, if you haven't looked, there's a website online, if you can find out if your property is within the NSA, which is the nitrogen-sensitive area. A lot of people might not know that their property is in the NSA. It's not just waterfront properties, it's also a lot of people on County Road, Clay Pond Road. So we're not just talking about, you know, McMansions on the water, we're talking about the working class of Borne. And if we do nothing, and if we have to follow through with what the state mandates, those systems cost upwards of $100,000 for a new system, highest and best. And it's not just a transfer of title. It's mandated. So please support this vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing none, I'm going to move to a vote on this article now. Thank you all for contributing to that debate. All right. This vote requires a simple majority. Does everyone have their handheld device? When I let you know, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. I declare the motion of the Select Board is passed with 301 in favor and 33 opposed. We will now have the next article from the lottery. The next article is Article II. Article II is on page 11 of your handbook. Article II on page 11 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Ms. Mistrangelo.
We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $74,497.25 for the purposes of this article, and to meet this appropriation, to transfer the sum of $74,497.25 from the premium from sale of bonds account.
You have the floor.
This is actually a housekeeping article. There is currently a fund deficit balance in the Buzzards Bay wastewater treatment plant capital project article that needs to have a funding source identified. The fund balance deficit is due to funding source allocation. It is not a cost overrun. The original amount of SRF, or State Revolving Fund loan authorized in connection with the construction, was reduced by $154,048 because some costs attributed to the SRF loan were deemed to be ineligible for SRF funding. The project did come in under budget by $79,550.74, leaving $74,497.25 that requires a funding source to be identified. This article appropriates and transfers the sum of $74,497.25 from the premium from sale of bonds account to cover the expense. I want to take this opportunity to talk about the funding of the wastewater treatment plant. A lot of extra work went into identifying, applying for, and managing outside funding sources to reduce the cost to the town. At the conclusion of the project, the outside funding sources paid over $5.4 million, or about 57% of the project cost. The sewer rate payers will pay about 25% of the cost over the next 20 years, and the general fund will pay about 18% of the cost. The wastewater treatment plant has helped revitalize Buzzards Bay, including the Hampton Inn, Calamar, new restaurants, additional housing, the Mass Maritime Conference Center, and other projects that are still in the planning stages. It is also worth noting that this project was impacted by COVID delays that resulted in increased costs, but it still came in under budget. A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would transfer the necessary money to fund the fund balance deficit in the capital article associated with the Buzzards Bay wastewater treatment plant project. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that the capital article would be closed, showing a funding deficit that would need to be deducted from future free cash certifications or required to be raised on the tax recap. The Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion on Article II.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Carla Emmons.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 7-0-0 in favor of this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article II? Seeing none, I'm going to move to a vote on Article II. Using your handheld device, you will have 30 seconds to vote. When I let you know, we're going to start voting. Green for red, I mean, green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board is passed with 313 votes in favor and 12 opposed. Article III is the next article. Article III is on page 12 of your handbook. Article III on page 12 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Gina Zarevitz.
We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $95,000 for the purposes of this article, and to meet this appropriation, to transfer the sum of $95,000 from free cash.
You have the floor.
Explanation, a yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would provide additional funding necessary to complete the installation of a new chiller at the Borne Middle School. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that there would not be enough funding available to sign the contract to complete the work. The Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Wayne Sampson.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 7-0-0 to recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on Article III? Seeing none, I'm going to ask that we move to a vote on Article III. This vote requires a simple majority. You will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board is passed with 263 votes in favor and 36 opposed. The last article here is Article IV. Article IV is on page 13 of your handbook. And it requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Anne Marie Sarunian.
We move that the town vote to amend the action taken under Article II fiscal 2025 budget of the 2024 annual town meeting by, one, appropriating monies in the total amount of $500,000 as specified in the chart entitled Funding Sources below, and, two, by increasing expenses by $500,000 as specified in the chart entitled These Amounts Are to Be Voted Below. Funding source from free cash, $500,000, for a total of $500,000. And amounts to be voted, shared costs, $500,000, for a total of $500,000.
Thank you. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This, again, is, is a sort of a housekeeping article. There's been a change in Medicare out-of-pocket expenses for supplemental plans, as well as additional employees who came on to the family plan than was anticipated during that fiscal year and what we projected. A yes or a vote in favor of the motion would provide additional funding necessary for the town's group health insurance budget. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that there would be insufficient funds available to meet the costs of the group health insurance budget for the current fiscal year. Select Board recommended unanimously 5-0-0 for approval of this motion.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Dan Deegan.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 7-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article IV? Go ahead, Ms. Goldstein.
Just a simple question, probably, not very deep. Free cash, where does that come from? It comes from revenue that we take in from taxes.
Okay. Is a, sure. I'm going to ask the town administrator to go ahead and answer that question. Thank you so much.
There are a number of sources from...
Can you speak into the microphone? I'm sorry.
It's okay. There are a number of ways that the town funds free cash. Departments who do not spend the full amount of their budget return money, and that is closed out to free cash after the end of a fiscal year. And if there is new growth, so new property tax revenue that is collected in excess of what we anticipated, that additional new growth would be closed out to free cash.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right.
One more, is that $500,000 is just a piece of what we have in free cash, correct?
Yes.
Great. Yes. Thank you.
We're not draining free cash.
Do you have a total of what we have in free cash?
I believe they're getting that number for you right now.
So, right now, before the votes at the town meeting, the balance in free cash is
Not bad. Thank you. Does that answer your question, Ms. Goldstein? Thank you.
It would pitch in for a fire station or something.
Thanks. So we're going to move to a vote on Article IV unless anyone else would like to be heard tonight on that one. Seeing none, this vote requires a simple majority. You will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 294 votes in favor and 36 opposed. All right. Having reached, at this time, we've conclude all, concluded all of the articles in the special town meeting, so I will, at this time, entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. I have, I have motions, I have a motion, and I have motions from the floor and the stage, and seconds from the floor and the stage. Thank you. All those in favor of dissolving the special town meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I declare the motion to dissolve the special town meeting has passed unanimously, and special town meeting is hereby concluded. We will now return to the annual town meeting, Article IV, which is on page 23 of your handbook. Article IV on page 23 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Ms. Mistrangelo.
We move the sum of $14,886,570 be authorized to be expended for the operation of the Integrated Solid Waste Management Department for the fiscal year starting July 1st, 2025, to and including June 30th, 2026, as follows. Salary and wages, $2,471,797. Reserve fund, $600,000. Host community fee, $1,030,000. And we further moved that the sum of $2,581,825 be transferred to the general fund to offset ISWIM Enterprise indirect expenses. And in order to meet this appropriation, we move that the sum of $17,468,395 be raised from ISWIM Enterprise receipts.
You have the floor.
Thank you. This article funds the ISWIM budget for the upcoming fiscal year. ISWIM pays the full cost of curbside trash and recycling. In addition, the ISWIM budget includes $1,030,000 in host community fees to be paid to the town. Overall, the ISWIM operating budget is a 1.23% increase from last year. A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would approve the ISWIM Enterprise operating budget for the fiscal year 2026, from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean there would be no approved ISWIM Enterprise operating budget for fiscal year 2026. The Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion on Article IV.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Amanda Bonjavani.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 6-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article IV? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article IV. This vote requires a simple majority. You will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 282 in favor and 17 opposed. Article 5 is the next article. It is on page 24 of your handbook. Article 5 requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Anne Marie Serunian.
We move that the town vote to appropriate $6,386,000 to pay costs of the capital outlay projects listed in the schedule printed below. And to meet this appropriation, we move to: one, transfer the sum of $2,484,000 from free cash; two, transfer the sum of $88,000 from SOAR retained earnings; three, transfer the sum of $3,089,000 from ISWIM's retained earnings; four, transfer the sum of $475,000 from the ambulance reserve fund; and five, transfer the sum of $250,000 from Waterways Improvement Fund. One, engineering, planning, dam, safety, Red Brook Harbor, $30,000 from free cash; police transportation replacement of four vehicles, $370,000 from free cash; police technology, voice recorder, phone server, $65,000 from free cash; fire transportation shift commander vehicle, $115,000 from free cash; fire transportation forestry vehicle 127, $450,000 from free cash; fire transportation ambulance 132, $475,000 from the ambulance reserve fund; shore and harbor infrastructure, annual dredging ramps, piers, $250,000 Waterways Fund; public works, transportation, dump truck M6 plus a plow, $156,000 from free cash; public works, infrastructure, drainage in various locations, $400,000 from free cash; public works, transportation, 33 cubic yard rubbish packer, $439,000 from the ISWIM retained earnings; public works, infrastructure, intersection improvement, Barlow's Landing at Shore Road, $423,000 from free cash; schools planning and OPM for solar array at the Bourne Middle School, $50,000 free cash; schools infrastructure flooring replacement, Bourne High School, $55,000 from free cash; schools infrastructure, Bourne High School elevator, $250,000 from free cash; schools transportation minibus, $120,000 from free cash; sewer planning, SCADA upgrades, $88,000 SOAR retained earnings; ISWIM transportation, roll-off truck, $300,000 ISWIM retained earnings; ISWIM equipment excavator, $500,000 from ISWIM retained earnings; and ISWIM infrastructure, partial landfill cap, $1,850,000 from ISWIM retained earnings.
You have the floor. She gets to keep talking.
Instead of going through every single one of these, some of them are self-explanatory, but I'd just like to highlight a few of them that you may have questions on. The first one, the dam safety at Red Brook Harbor, this is consulting expenses to create an existing conditions plan so that we can move into an action plan for the fixes. So, that's professional. Let's see. The OPM for the solar array at the Bourne Middle School, that's all damage control. The contract we have with the solar array, I believe, has ended or was about to end right before testing. So, those panels need to come off, and we need to have an OPM to ensure that the removal of those panels are within the contract as well as keeping an eye on any type of damage and restoring the roof to its original condition prior to the solar panels being installed. The SCADA upgrades, SCADA is a monitoring system for like the grinder pumps and the sewer pumps. So, this is consulting expenses to design this system. Well, in the long run, the Main Street, the Buzzards Bay, and the sewer, the wastewater treatment plant will be on one continuous monitoring system, so the technology will be much more efficient. This is for design of that system. We'll be back at a later date with a little more on that one. But if you have any other questions on anything else in this list, I'm happy to oblige.
I will find out now if the Finance Committee has a positive recommendation on this article.
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Wayne Sampson.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously, 7-0-0, to recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this article? Yes, Mr. Doherty, I see you.
The thing that troubles me is that the allocation for fixing a roof because of the removal of the solar panels. The solar panels were part, or integral, I thought, an integral part of something that was brought before town meetings some time ago with regard to contributing to the Energy Management, Energy Conservation Program that we contracted with, I think it was Crane. My concern is, were the panels installed incorrectly to damage the roof? Because the next question I have is, if the solar panels did not significantly damage the membrane on the roof, why can't you just patch around it and maintain the solar panels?
The contract is up. The solar panels are beyond their useful life. We need to have a professional in the field, an OPM, owner's project manager, to ensure that any type of damage, obviously, when they're going to remove them, there will be holes. They need to restore that roof to its original before, prior to installing the panels. So, we need someone who can monitor that process. That's what this is about.
Okay. But I guess I misunderstood, because there was an article coming up that's talking about removal of the panels.
No. What? Are you confusing the article with the police station? We're talking about the middle school.
Article 12. Article 12 is the OPM for the solar removal. This is to monitor it, I do believe. So, I will let Ms. Serunian clarify the difference between these two. Or Ms... Go ahead, Ms. Trangelo.
So, the solar panels have been on the middle school roof for 20 years. Roof has been leaking for the last 15 years. We, the town, we have a plan for replacing the middle school roof with an estimated cost of $3,500,000. It is now eligible for MSBA Accelerated Roof Repair Program that will pay for a significant amount of the cost. If we had removed the panels and replaced the roof, we would have been responsible for the rest of the solar panel contract, so we had to wait until the solar panel contract was done. The solar panel company is responsible for removing the panels and making sure the roof is replaced in its original condition. The purpose of the OPM is to make sure that that work is done satisfactorily. We do not want to be left with unsealed holes from the mounting panels of the roof. This is insurance to protect the town. It's the cost of the owner's project manager to oversee the removal of the solar panel from the middle school roof.
Okay. So, the solar panels are not part of any energy conservation program going forward?
No.
All right. Please identify yourself. Thank you.
Yes, Ian Rubenstein from Sagamore. Thank you for clarifying the solar panel thing. And it's a good thing to hear that you're obviously removing them because of a 20-year contract, but that the solar company is responsible for restoring the roof and the damage done to it from the installation. My main question is, you have two very large ticketed items on here, and it was alluded to earlier that your free cash was $8 million, which is going to be, obviously, taking a huge hit with this particular article. You talk about $400,000 for drainage and $423,000 for an intersection. Can you elaborate on those two, what those expenses are going to be or that money's going to be used for, for those particular entries in this article?
So, for the drainage in various locations, what the DPW department has done is created a spreadsheet of all the drainage issues in the town, which is approximately $2 million. And they've prioritized that list. This particular article, and they're going to phase it in. So, phase it out. So, this particular article, the priority for this one will first be at the Woodland Avenue. And then, any money's left over will continue down the list to try to continue to address drainage areas in all the locations throughout the town. That's what that is used for. And then, the Barlow's Landing intersection? Is that the other question?
Please.
I don't know if Tim wants to speak to it, the town engineer, but there have been... Oh, okay, Matt can speak to it. I know a little... The project has sort of morphed into, from being a very large project to a smaller project, so...
I reserve the right to ask a question once his presentation is complete.
You can have a follow-up question.
Thank you.
So, let's let Mr. Sawicki go ahead.
Matt Sawicki, Public Works Director. So, the Barlow's Shore Intersection is going to create a four-way stop there and create pedestrian improvements in that area. It was a much larger-scale project. We went through the process. We shrunk it down to focus on the safety of the intersection.
All right. Thank you.
Do you have a... Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leona Bombachi from Pocasset.
Go ahead, Ms. Bombachi. Can everyone please refrain from commenting in between speakers because it impacts my ability to hear the speaker? Can you identify yourself again, please?
Leona Bombachi from Pocasset. The gentleman that just spoke, I guess, that was my question about number 11. What exactly are we doing for $430,000 at Barlow's Landing Road?
Did they answer your question? Or do you want to follow up?
No, he didn't quite answer the full project for $430,000. What are we doing at that intersection?
It was 300, I believe. But go ahead, Mr. Sawicki.
So, going to be drainage improvements and ADA compliance sidewalks and ramps, new crosswalks. And we're going to include the four-way stop, which will include signage on the outside and improve visibility.
Are you putting in lights or just...
Nope, just stop signs.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bombachi. Yes, Ms. Goldstein? Go ahead.
I just, I don't see any referencing here to any of the major projects that are on tab here.
Okay, so we're focusing on the items in this article.
Oh, I know that.
So, I would like to focus on this article and move to a vote.
And the reason I say that is, that free cash, $8 million, is a pretty big amount of money. And we have some other... How do we prioritize the spending of free cash? How do these get in? Some things get into it and others not. How do, you know...
Well, they're based on recommendations from all the departments, and then the Select Board vets out and then recommendations made by each department and prioritizes, along with the recommendation from the Town Administrator, on...
Right, okay.
On this list.
Thank you.
And do you ever send any back and say no?
Well, capital outlay also. I mean, hears it and prioritizes and makes their recommendations as well.
Great. Okay.
I just wondered, you know, I know that the fire station and the library, maybe the library's in here. That's not in here. That's not on this agenda. But it is a ballot question. The fire station is a ballot question.
Thank you. I have a point of order. Ms. Goldstein, I'd like to move to a vote on Article 5. If you don't have a specific question on Article 5, then I would like to move to a vote, so please. Thank you.
I hope it's not an override for the fire station.
Please, please, thank you. Thank you very much. I would love to move to a vote on Article 5 at this time. Thank you. Does anyone else want to be heard on this article? Hearing none, I'm going to move to a vote. This vote requires a simple majority. When I tell you, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote, green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 289 votes in favor and 46 in opposition. Article 6 is the next article, and it is on page 26 of your handbook. Article 6 on page 26 of your handbook requires a 2/3 supermajority vote. I need to note here that there is a Scrivener's error in the handbook, and it states it only requires a simple majority. That is not true. It requires a 2/3 supermajority vote. Thank you. And I would ask at this time, does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Peter Meyer.
Yes, thank you. We move the town appropriate the amount of $400,000 for the purposes of reconstructing the Jackson Field bleachers at the Bourne High School, including the payment on costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow the said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore.
You have the floor, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. This project includes the removal and replacement of the current home side bleachers, approximately 610 seats, as well as site improvements to make the new bleachers accessible. It also includes a bid alternate for the replacement of the visiting side bleachers and making them accessible. In the process of going through this bid, it came in well over the $400,000 that's allocated in this article. But they choose to go forward with this article with the intent of putting the $400,000 aside and then going back out the rebid for this project and then see what comes back. And then, if we have to look at additional money, they'll come back in the fall for the difference. Or if it gets to be too out of sight, they may have to just scrap it and reprioritize and come back. The feasibility study completed last year concluded that while there were no apparent physical signs of the failure of the existing bleacher structure, they noted concerns in both the build-out and the design of the current structure, most significantly that the back railing was not high enough and does not need code. In addition, access to east side is not ADA compliant, and this project will address those needs as well.
Thank you.
And yes vote in favor of this article would approve the capital borrowing project for... You know, say that back. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion would approve the funding to rebuild the bleachers at the high school. A no or a nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that the project could not move forward at this time.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Dan Deegan.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously, 7-0-0, to recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 6? Seeing none, we're going to move to a vote on Article 6. This vote requires a supermajority vote, so we are going to do math when the voting is concluded. You will have 30 seconds to cast your vote, green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Yes, this vote requires a 2/3 majority vote. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 116 votes in favor and 49 opposed. Is that correct? I did the math in my head, sorry. Article 7 is the next article. Article 7 is on page 27. You may approach the podium. Thank you.
Mark Terrell with a point of order.
Yes, sir.
Or an observation, that vote total that we just took was way less than the previous several.
I agree. I noted it too.
Oh.
Yeah. I noted that it was about 100 less than the other vote, so I'm just gonna, was gonna actually...
Are we thinking there's 100 people that chose not to vote?
I don't think so. I was gonna ask our electorate... I was going to ask our electronic voting person if we could possibly redo that vote just to make sure, or if there was any issues. So thank you so much, Mr. Terrell. Thank you so much, so.
Yeah, it said a.
Some folks on the stage are reporting an issue with the electronic device, so I'm going to go ahead and ask that we can revote Article 6. So let me just make sure that our electronic voting vendor here is ready for me this time. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. We are going to move to a new vote on Article 6, which does require a two-thirds supermajority vote because it... Yes, there was a Scrivener's error, as I said at the beginning of this article, and I'm sorry that wasn't clear. But this article was printed as only requiring a supermajority, but it was actually supposed to... It was printed as requiring a simple majority, but it actually requires a two-thirds majority vote. So thank you so much for that question, too. All right, are we ready? All right, we are ready to move to the vote on Article 6. Thank you all for your patience. You will have 30 seconds to vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Okay. We're going to do math. All right, I declare the motion of the Select Board as passed with 243 in favor and 99 opposed. Thank you. Article 7 is on page 27 of your handbook. Article 7 on page 27 of your handbook requires a two-thirds majority vote as well. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on Article 7?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti.
We move that the town appropriates $1,863,000 for the purposes of replacing and upgrading any necessary components appurtenant to the residential low-pressure sewer system, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant general law, C44, Section 7.1, or Section 8.14, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town thereof, therefore, sorry. And further, that while such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town, it is the intent of the town that such bonds or notes be paid in the first instance from the Sewer Enterprise Fund.
You have the floor.
A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would approve the capital borrowing project for the sewer system. A no or nay vote would oppose, vote opposed to the motion would mean that the sewer project would not be funded and would not move forward at this time. The Select Board recommendate, voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Amanda Bon Giovanni.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 7-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 7? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to move to a vote on Article 7. This vote requires a two-thirds majority. Using your handheld device, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. I declare the motion of the Select Board as passed with 278 votes in favor and 49 opposed. Article 8 is the next article and that is on page 28 of your handbook. Article 8 on page 28 of your handbook requires a two-thirds supermajority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Gina Zaravitz.
We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $18,800,000 for the cost of planning, construction, equipping, and furnishing of the new fire station facility and silvery space located at 171 Clay Pond Road, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the South Side Fire Station Building Committee. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow the sum of $18,800,000 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7.3 of the general laws or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Provided however, that this vote shall not take effect until the town votes at a regular or special town election to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by general law, 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2.5. The amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the borrowing authorized by this vote.
You have the floor, Mrs. Zaravitz.
A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would approve the capital project for designing and constructing a new fire station and would send the question to the voters at a general town election on May 20th for a debt exclusion vote. A no or nay vote opposed to this motion would mean that the design and construction of a new fire station would not be funded and would not move forward at this time. Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Wayne Sampson.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 7-0-0 to recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you. Is there discussion on Article 8? Sure, go ahead, Ms. Goldstein.
I guess I'm a little confused about the wording in that paragraph, the motion. However, that this vote shall not take effect until the town votes at a regular or special town election to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by general law, 59, Chapter 59, 21(c), Proposition 2.5. The amounts required to pay the principal and interest on the borrowing authorized by this vote. What exactly does that mean as far as proposition?
Go ahead, Mrs. Zaravitz, if you can.
Well, that means this vote will also be taken at the ballot.
Right.
To approve as well.
Right.
So that's what it means. If we approve this article tonight, is that what you're saying? Then it is then going to the ballot on May 20th?
Correct, yes.
And there'll be, there could be a Proposition 2.5 override. There could be, depending on the vote, on the ballot question on Election Day. Yes or no?
Yes.
Oh, there could be.
It is.
What?
There is. It is, the ballot is already set for the May 20th election.
Yes, it is.
Yes. So it is on the ballot.
Right.
But it is dependent on this vote.
How does it depend on this vote? I'm not clear. Need more explanation?
I'm not the one to answer, so I will ask the town administrator.
It's a debt exclusion.
It, I'm not the answerer. So someone has to answer the question.
In order to fund the fire station using a debt exclusion, which means that it is raising the taxes beyond Proposition 2.5 for this project, this body, town meeting, must approve by a two-thirds supermajority to do so. It's also required in order to do the borrowing that it pass by a majority vote at the election on May 20th. So both steps are required in order for the Select Board to borrow the funds.
Thank you. So it's a two-part process that we're starting here tonight. Great. Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else, would anyone else like to be heard on this article?
So I am in...
Can you state your name, please, for the record?
Sorry, I don't remember. Ian Rubenstein from Sagamore. I am in favor of a new fire station. I think, to clarify what this young lady's getting at, is since there is a probability of a Prop. 2.5 override, can you shed light on what the tax liability for each homeowner would be should this police, a fire station move forward? What that could be as far as you're borrowing 18-point-something million dollars with what sort of interest rate and what tax liability should a homeowner in Bourne be expected to pay?
The Finance Director is going to answer your question. Thank you so much, Mr. Rubenstein.
Hi, Erica Fleming, Finance Director. So we assume an interest-only payment in the first year of fiscal '27 and based on current tax rates and a discount rate of 4.25%, this will add $45 to the average single-family tax bill. Based on the current existing exclusions and various financing assumptions, again, in fiscal '28, this would add $128.18 to the average family tax bill. In fiscal '29, because the payments are declining as we go, $98.02. Fiscal '30, $90.48 and so on.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on Article 8? Oh, members of the Select Board would like to be heard on Article 8? Go ahead, Ms. Zornian.
Just an additional point of clarification from Erica. I can't see her down there. So when she says average cost to the homeowner, it's the average assessment right now and the average assessment in the town is $733,000 and change for the average cost, average-assessed home. So that's what the numbers are based on. And if you go to the town website, you'll see a chart and there'll be a range from assessed values as low as $210,000, I believe, up to over 1.1 or 1.2 million?
1.5.
1.5 million. So you can see that chart and get a better idea, Mr. Rubenstein, of, based on what your home is assessed at.
Great.
So that's what those, where those numbers come from.
Thank you.
Just to clarify.
I have a statement.
Want to say? Ms. Goldstein, do you have something else you'd like to say on this article?
The extra $45 a year? A quarter?
Go ahead.
The tax impact will be on the tax bill for every year of the note, which is 20 years.
Thank you.
The average homeowner will get an increase of $45 that first year? I just want to know if it's the whole year?
Yes, that is the annual payment for the first year.
Because my taxes went up $40 this year.
We haven't voted on this one. We're going to vote, we're going to... Thank you. Okay. Would anyone else like to be heard on this article? Hearing none, we're going to move to a vote on Article 8. This vote requires a two-thirds supermajority. Using your handheld device, you will have 30 seconds to vote. Green for yes, red for no. I declare the motion of the Select Board as passed with 297 votes in favor and 40 opposed. Article 9, yes, thank you, everyone. Article 9 is on page 29 of your handbook. All right. Article 9 on page 29 of your handbook also requires a two-thirds supermajority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Melissa Ferretti.
We move that the town appropriate $2,500,000 for the purpose of demolishing, demolishing and the existing roof and installing a new roof at the police station at 35 Armory Road, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant, in pursuant to GLCC4, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
You have the floor, Ms. Ferretti.
A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would approve the capital borrowing project to replace the roof at the police station. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean the roof replacement would not be funded and would not move forward at this time. The Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
We do, Madam.
I recognize Wayne Sampson.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 7-0-0 to recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 9? Go right ahead.
Yes, my name's John York. I live in Kalamet. I don't know if there's an answer to this question yet because I'm not familiar with exactly how far the planning has gone for this roof. But I have a question about the specifications for the new roof and whether the framing, the sheathing, or what materials the framing, the sheathing, and the roofing would be for the new roof, if they're known. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe the town administrator is the one to answer that question. Thank you.
At this point, we have a conceptual design for the new roof at the police station. The system will need to be taken off down to the trust work, new sheathing built out from there. We have conceptually looked at three different alternatives. A decision has not been made yet. One alternative is another asphalt shingled roof, which would require provision of mechanical ventilation to properly pull air through the system. And then two alternatives that would not require ventilation, one of which would be a standing seam metal roof and one of which is, at this point, we're looking at a synthetic slate. And we have gotten very early cost estimates for all three of those systems. If this article is approved, a building committee would be required to be stood up and they would have to make those aesthetic and design decisions about the new roofing system.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. York. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Goldstein, you may go ahead.
How old is the police station?
Okay, thank you.
The current roof was built from April through July of 2019.
Thank you.
And we have to spend $2.5 million on a new one? I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. Shouldn't somebody be responsible for replacing that, that built it?
Okay, let's, it's not going to be a back and forth. That was your follow-up question. Thank you, Ms. Goldstein. Go ahead.
The Select Board and the town are currently in the process of serving a lawsuit against the contractor and the architect of record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Thomas Spence from Monument Beach. Yeah, my question is that should have immediately gone back to the architect, general contractor, and the bonding company, and they should be responsible for a large portion of that. They have to guarantee that work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article 9? Seeing none, we're gonna proceed to a vote on Article 9. This vote requires a 2/3 supermajority. Using your handheld device, you'll have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. I declare the motion of the Select Board has failed with only 210 votes in favor and 112 opposed. Article 10 is the next article. It's on page 31 of your handbook. Please don't, no applause, please. I'm trying to get us through this night. Thank you so much. All right. Article 10 on page 30 of your handbook also requires a supermajority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. I recognize Ms. Ferretti.
We move that the town appropriate $475,000 for the purpose of installing air conditioning in the gun range at the police station at 35 Armory Road, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Town Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant to GLC 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
You're at the floor.
A yes or a no vote in favor of this motion would approve the borrowing project for the gun range at the police station. A no or nay vote opposed to this motion would mean that the capital project would not be funded and would not move forward at this time. The Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Mr. Sampson.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously 7-0-0 to recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion now on Article 10? Seeing none, we can move to a vote on Article 10. Oh, I didn't, thank you so much, everyone. I didn't see you.
Doug Prince from Pocasset. Just a question as to, if we were to approve the air conditioning, do we run the risk of it being damaged without a new roof?
Logical.
Good question.[826.12][826.12](Laughter).
The Town Administrator is gonna answer that good question. Go ahead.
The HVAC system for the range is a completely separate system from the building HVAC. So the answer for the gun range to the question is no.
Thank you. All right. Okay. If no one else would like to be heard on Article 10, we can move to a vote on Article 10. This vote requires a 2/3 supermajority vote. Using your handheld device, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. I declare the motion of the Select Board has failed, only 125 in favor and 145 opposed. Article 11 is the next article. It is on page 31 of your handbook. Article 11 on page 31 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on Article 11?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Amory Sarunian.
We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $150,000 for the purpose of a schematic design for a new library to be constructed at 19 Sandwich Road, including the cost of securing an owner's project manager and designer to develop schematic plans for said design and all other costs incidental or related thereto, and to meet this appropriation to transfer the sum of $150,000 from free cash.
You're at the floor.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Over the last several, several months, the library, well, over the last couple of years, the library trustees have put together a strategic plan to get us through '24 through '28 with respects to the library. As a result of that strategic plan, part of the study was to create a scope for the needs of the library, the structural needs of the library. So feasibility study was then conducted, and over the last several months, the focus was on four strategic options. One, total rehab of the existing space. Two, rehab and expansion of existing space. Three, demolition and new construction at current location. And four, moving the library to a different location. As a result of a robust public input between surveys, hundreds of peoples responded to those surveys, thank you very much, there was also public outreach, there was public meetings held with respects to what to do with the library building at 19 Sandwich Road. As a result, option three, which is demolition and new construction at the current location, was the best and feasible option for the library. Now we need to take the next steps. If we're going to have an understanding of what those costs are for a new library, we need to then, in real time, with real programming, with real space design, understand what that cost is. It's important to, for capital decision-making with respects to the library, and it's important for capital decision-making with respects to all of our capital. As you see here tonight, we have a lot of decision-making to do with respects to capital projects. This will help in giving us an understanding of what it costs to build a new library at 19 Sandwich Road. There also is some, we, there is a mass state library building construction program. There was this go-around. We don't know if there'll be another one. If there is, we don't know if we'll be accepted into that program and what those reimbursable expenses could be. There is a possibility in a perfect world that design after we get accepted into the program, that design costs incurred after would be somewhat reimbursable up to a certain percentage. So I relate it to what the Icewind Building Committee is going through right now in their design, schematic design, and the decision-making that's happening as a result of the process alone is invaluable to what the decisions you'll be making come in the fall with respects to the Icewind Building that's currently being designed and planned. If, if the chair of, through the moderator, if the chair of the trustees of the library would like to add anything to that. So we're just looking to have an OPM and a designer to figure out the cost of building a library at 19 Sandwich Road.
Okay. Thank you for that. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Tom Joyce.
The Finance Committee voted 5-1-1 to recommend approval of the motion.
I forgot to announce the Select Board.
I know, I'm gonna go back to you.
Thank you.[1208.98][1208.98](Laughter).
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Sarunian, you may go ahead.
Thank you. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion would approve funds to move forward developing a schematic design for a new library to replace the existing building at 19 Sandwich Road. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that additional design work would not be funded and would not move forward at this time. The Select Board voted 4-1-0 to recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
All right, so I'm gonna recognize Kathy Fox Alfano at the podium. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Kathy Fox Alfano, and I'm the Chair of the Library Trustees. And both the trustees, as well as the Library Feasibility Study Committee, voted unanimously to proceed and ask for this $150,000 for OPM, as we've discussed, and design and planning. What this does is give us a leg up. We have no guarantee that there is going to be a state grant. If there is, that's fabulous, but if there isn't, we need to continue to proceed. We are calling this parallel paths. We are not saying that we won't go for the state grant. We certainly will if it's available. But in the meantime, the library has many, many structural, electronic, and mechanical issues that need to be addressed. We want to stay ahead of the game. And we also want to say that, that there's been numbers bounced around about how much this library would cost, and even I was shocked. But there are many ways to go about this. We will do our best to minimize what the taxpayer will have to bear. We can look at other grants. We want to do a foundation to bring in other monies, to make sure that you get a library for the future at the least cost. Also, we know people love the current library, but we need to renovate the current library as it exists now would be about $4 million more than a new library because there's so much unusable space, and we'd have to still go up to code for places that you never use. It's actually, we've been told, and this is what we learned with our Library Feasibility Study, that it's less expensive to do a new library. We will certainly want to continue the character of Bourndale Village. We will build a building that will fit in with the character. There's no, we're not gonna have any steel and glass kind of library. So I would implore you to please vote positively for the $150,000. It's a really small amount compared, it's out of free cash, which we heard is millions and millions of dollars, although less today now, but anyway. So please, please do vote for this. We are, so many of us are working very hard to get a wonderful library that we can all be proud of. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article 11? I see you back there. I know. And now you're gonna make it worth it, right?
Thomas Spence again from Monument Beach. I believe it was 2004 or something like that, we had a vote on funding stuff at the library if somebody could, and it lost by one vote.
No, it lost, I was the trustee at the time, and I was part of the process for the Massachusetts Building Library Program. And the vote was six, and I declared a recount and knocked it down to four.
We kicked the can down the road again. I done a lot of work in the town of Barnstable on work, and the former head of Structures and Grounds, yeah, first thing he did on most of the buildings in Barnstable replaced siding roof, this is all over the town of Barnstable. He made it a point to do that. We have to take care of our buildings, otherwise, then it was gonna cost us under $2 million to what they wanted to do.
So the grant that we were awarded was $2.1 million, and the total building cost at that time was $6 million.
Right. Now look at how much it is.
Well, we don't know actual costs. We're making assumptions.
Well, I'm saying, we didn't do the work then that we should have done, and now we're paying big time for it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spence. I do see you there, Ms. Goldstein. You may step up to the podium. Thank you, Ms. Goldstein. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, yeah, fine. I attended on April 17th a community engagement meeting at the library to take a look at a feasibility study. I presume it's a different one, that, different kinds of buildings that were going to be selected. I guess they had done a survey of the building's condition, and it's not very good, and it's got a lot of maintenance that never was done. I just wonder a couple of things. Does the, are the trustees responsible for maintenance? And do we have a record of any kind of maintenance on that building over the last 20 years? And is there any provision anywhere? It's a wonderful location. It fits right in, and people have loved it. This is another side of the canal where people pay taxes, and there's nothing for library there. Any provisions for the other side of the bridge? Sagamore Beach?
Thank you. I would ask that you would answer the first part of that question as a trustee. Do you know the answer?
As a, as a...
You were a former trustee?
As a former trustee.
Maybe Ms. Alfano can answer it. She, she's a trustee.
So the trustees do have, as elected officials, do have care and custody of the library. And there have been several, you know, along the way, maintenances done, general maintenances and some structural maintenance. The more recent one was securing the facade so that it didn't fall down and people could walk through the front door. There are other, but there are other maintenance issues. We do have a chiller. We're hoping, fingers crossed, that when you flip the switch, that the chiller will start this year. So there has been maintenance along the way, yes.
Thank you.
The second question, I'm not sure, okay.
Are you gonna answer it, or is...
Well, it doesn't relate to the article.
It doesn't relate to the article.
Expanding on the other side. I mean, those things, the result of the feasibility study was to demolish and have new construction at the current location.
Thank you.
That was discussed, though, during the feasibility study.
How much was the feasibility study that did that?
Pardon me?
How much was the feasibility study that concluded that?
The one that's just recently being completed, and the final report will come out in another week or so. Is that what you're asking?
No, the one that came out April 17th, when I went there to see what was happening.
So this, this is the result of that study was to demolish and construct a new library?
How much was that feasibility study?
Oh, originally, $150,000.
Okay. So this is another $150,000 feasibility.
This is, that was feasibility conceptual.
Feasibility. I would like nothing more than a nice library. Don't get me wrong, and a fire station, too.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Goldstein.
You like to cut me off.
I am gonna cut you off now. You have been at the podium for almost every article tonight, and I would like to hear from...
And why is that a problem?
Because I would like to move the meeting on, ma'am. Thank you.
That's my right. It's everybody's right.
It is your right. We have heard from you tonight. Thank you so much. Thank you. Mr. DeCarolus.
Carrollus, Monument Beach. I'm a little confused because I believe part of this feasibility study is to understand how much it's gonna cost to do the proposed plan, because we don't know. But at the same time, I'm hearing that to renovate the existing building is $4 million more. So if we don't know how much the existing building is going to cost, how do we know that the renovation is $4 million more?
So during the feasibility study, there was conceptual options, right? With conceptual, with assumptions made on a very broad scale of how things work. And part of that process, if you, if, for those of you who attended the public meeting, the OPM, Johnson &amp; Roberts, gave estimates, very broad estimates, on costs for renovation of the existing building, costs for an expansion, renovation and expansion. But these are very general. They're based on assumptions. They're not based on real-time, actual costs. And based on all of that, when the public came... And based on all of that, when the public came and looked at all the options, the result of that was that it's, the most feasible option is to demolish and have new construction at the existing location. So now we need to understand if we're gonna make decisions about capital planning with respects to the library, or capital planning the big picture and where it fits and the impact, we need real-time actual costs to make those decisions.
Can I get a follow-up real quick?
Go right ahead.
So the next $150,000 is simply to carry forward with the decision, there'll be no monies allocated or no time spent to determine the actual costs of a renovation versus the actual cost of a new structure?
This is the end result of what the people have wanted and voted for, to have a new library at 19 Sandwich Road. Those, that discussion was had.
Okay.
All those options, and this is, this is the final decision based on the feasibility study.
Thank you, does that answer your question? Thank you.
It does.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this article? Mr. Mealy? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, I will move to a vote on Article 11. You will have 30 seconds to cast your vote using your handheld device. Green for yes, red for no, this vote requires a simple majority. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board as passed with 259 votes in favor and 55 opposed. Article 12 is the next article, it is on page 32 of your handbook. Yes, Mr. Mealy, I see you there, go ahead.
I'd like to ask for reconsideration of Article 10.
Article 10. All right, so, at this time, we have a motion for reconsideration on Article 10. I have a second. Okay, it is a majority vote to decide whether or not we are gonna reconsider Article 10, and then after that, we would move forward to a second vote, and it would be two-thirds. Okay? Does that make sense to you, Mr. Mealy? So you've made a motion to reconsider Article 10, you have a second. I hear you, thank you. If anyone would like to be heard on the motion on the floor, which is, we have a motion to reconsider Article 10, you may be heard now.
May I speak to that, Madam Moderator?
Absolutely, Mr. Mealy, please go ahead.
Thank you. Quickly, ladies and gentlemen, I think, I think that the decision not to fund the two articles on the police station were made with kind of a reaction to a poor presentation by the folks in front. And I'd like us to stop and think about this. The reasoning behind the request for the roof can be addressed if that should be reconsidered. But regarding the ventilation system, and perhaps the police might want to speak on this, is that installation needs to be replaced to allow the officers to train in an indoor range downstairs. It's unrelated to the roof, it needs to be done, we should support the people that stand in front of us when times get tough. And I'm asking you to do this tonight. Support the reconsideration, support the article, and let's fix this thing. The building was built in 2019, we've had some stumbling with the roof, that's a different article. But right now, let's fix the ventilation system for these guys and gals. Thank you.
I would recognize Chief Esip at this time.
Frank Esip, Police Chief. So, as for the range, a design decision was made during the construction process, sorry, I like to look at everyone here, to not put air conditioning in the range. We, I and the members of the department were not part of that, and the current administration was not part of that. The range does not function from the middle of the spring to the middle of the fall, because the humidity from the outside is brought into the range as it cycles through the air. That causes water to drip off the windows, pool on the floor of the range, which, anyone that's used guns, it's not a safe condition to have a gun in your hand and wet floors. On top of that, the temperatures in that range can get to anywhere from 90 to 100 degrees. With our gear on, that is not a safe condition for me to have officers in to utilize the range. So that range is out of use for half the year. Our options available to us are to use an outdoor range, which is, number one, weather-dependent, and number two, is becoming harder and harder to do with various limitations on outside ranges. Or compact all of our training into the season that we can use the range, which becomes a staffing and a scheduling issue. So, that's a little bit of the history behind the range portion of it. I do ask that you support the vote to reconsider, and thank you very much for any of your thoughts on that.
Thank you. Mr. Toby.
Good evening, Aaron Toby, Greg Abels. My question, my first part of the question is more of a procedural question, and that is, did Steve have the, was he vetted for reconsideration to give a vote?
I didn't know he was gonna do that.
Well, I mean, you have to be part of the majority, correct, in order to make a reconsideration for a vote? Failing side?
The person who moves for reconsideration has to be on the prevailing side.
Prevailing. Right.
Mr. Mealy, for the record, please, I'm sorry. Mr. Toby is correct, you do have to be on the prevailing side to reconsider, go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
I hate this parliamentary stuff.
We have to do this.
No, no, I voted on the prevailing side on the second vote, because the first vote on the police station failed.
That makes sense.
And I was concerned that the second vote on the police station would fail.
Okay.
The prevailing side voted no.
He said he was on the prevailing side for Article 10, which failed.
Okay, all right.
Do you credit that, I credit that, so I'm gonna keep going with debate. Go ahead, Mr. Toby.
I too am in favor of the air conditioning at the police department. Me personally, when it comes to safety, I don't think there's enough we can do to support the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toby. All right, the motion we have on the floor right now, yep, you can go ahead, come on.
Hi, I'm Lisa Kenny from Katamet, and I'm a Realtor, and one of my concerns would be that if we didn't do the air conditioning system, there might be a mold problem in the basement, and that could be a very big expense for the town.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. So right now, we have a motion on the floor to reconsider Article 10. Does anyone else want to be heard on this motion to reconsider? I see you, Mr. York.
I'll just be brief. I can understand why there's some people who are upset about the roof replacement, and I think this was a spillover vote. And I would just urge you to think about this article as it is, and no matter what you think about Article 9, don't let that influence your decision on Article 10, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. York. Would anyone else like to be heard on the motion to reconsider? Hearing none, we can move to a vote on the motion to reconsider. This is a simple majority vote. A yes vote would allow us to reconsider Article 10, a no vote would leave it where it is, which is in the past right now, okay? So if you would like to reconsider, you may vote yes. If you would not like to reconsider Article 10, you may vote no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare that Mr. Mealy's motion to reconsider Article 10 has passed with 234 in favor and 62 opposed. So I will ask everyone now to go back to Article 10, which is on page 30 in your handbook and requires a two-thirds majority vote. Is there anyone who would like to be heard on Article 10? Can you go to the podium, please, so we can have this?
I'd be glad to make the motion, ma'am.
Are you, are you gonna make the motion, I was gonna have a select board member make it?
It makes more sense.
All right, thank you, Mr. Terrell.
Okay, once again.
Go ahead, Ms. Ferretti.
All right, here we are. "We move that the town appropriate $475,000 for the purpose of installing air conditioning in the gym and the gun range at the police station at 35 Armory Road, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under pursuant to GLC 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore."
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on Article 2, Article 10?
Mark Terrell, again, just a brief point, I believe I heard correctly in discussions a month or so ago, that in addition to what you've heard about mold, humidity, temperature, it is true, and I'll look for a nod from over there, that in the action of firing live rounds, gases are emitted from those live rounds that become, in a poorly ventilated space, become potentially harmful to the occupants of that poorly ventilated space. Let's ventilate.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article 10? Mr. York, and then Mr. Mealy.
So, continuing with the idea that there may be some concern that bad decisions were made in the past, I think that's what we heard Chief Esip say, he was a little kinder in the way he said it. But this is an attempt to correct the bad decision. If you're upset about the bad decision in the past, it would make sense to vote to correct it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. York. Mr. Mealy?
Thank you, madam, and thank you all for going this way. I did not vote in the prevailing on the previous article relative to the roof, but I'd like an opportunity to take care of that as well, if there's somebody that would like to make that motion after we address this, and I.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy.
And I'd like to urge you to support the ventilation.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. Would anyone else like to be heard on Article 10? Seeing and hearing none, I'm gonna move to a vote on Article 10, which requires a two-thirds majority vote. Using your handheld device, you may press green for yes, red for no, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote, begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board has passed with 239 in favor and 53 opposed. Thank you. All right. Article 12. Article 12 on page 32 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the select board have a positive motion on this article?
"We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $50,000 under the contracting authority of the school committee for the purpose of removing the solar array from the roof of the Bourne Middle School, including the cost of securing an owner's project manager to oversee the removal of said array, and any other costs incidental or related thereto, and to meet this appropriation to transfer the sum of $50,000 from free cash." Madam Moderator, we move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Okay, thank you, we're just gonna re, something just happened. All right. Mrs. Zarevitz has moved to indefinitely postpone Article 12, and we have a second. Would you like to, you have the floor. Ms. McCollum is going to explain.
I apologize for the confusion. Article 12, printed in your book, Mr. Doherty was correct, is included in the capital article number five, line 12. So, we don't want the meeting to fund it twice.
No, we don't. Okay, thank you, that makes perfect sense. So, Mr. Doherty, it was already there. All right, you can come up for your question now, go ahead. But we have a motion to indefinitely postpone this article, is what is on the floor, so just, you can make your comment, but it's not gonna be related to the article, right? Go ahead.
I hear that.
Okay.
But my question is, you're removing the solar panels, I'd like to know if any thought had gone into the increase in the budget requirements for that middle school, because your electric bill is gonna go up. You're running a, what I'd call a substantial building, you're gonna have increased costs, so I'm, that was the, that was the point that I was trying to make before.
That was a good point, unfortunately, yes, we already debated this article, but thank you for bringing that up, sir. All right, the motion to indefinitely postpone this article is what we are voting on now, it is a simple majority vote. So if you would like to indefinitely postpone Article 12, you may press the green button for yes, or the red button for no, you may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board as passed, Article 12 has been indefinitely postponed. postponed with 227 in favor and 6 opposed. Thank you. We are now going to go to the next essential article, which is gonna jump ahead to Article 20, which is on page 40 of your handbook. Thank you all. Okay. Article 20 on page 40 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the select board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Peter Meyer.
Thank you. We move the town, that the town vote upon the recommendation of the community preservation committee to appropriate the sum of $75,000 for the purposes of administrative and operating expenses of the community preservation committee for fiscal year 2026, and to meet this appropriation, to transfer the sum of $75,000 from the community preservation and designated fund balance.
You have the floor, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. The community preservation committee administrative and operating budget is the same as previously requested in the last annual town meeting. A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would fund the annual operating administrative expenses of the CPC. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion means that the CPC could not have any funding to pay expenses related to administration and regular operation. The select board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Jim Sullivan.
The finance committee voted 7 to 0 in favor of this article.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on Article 20? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 20. This vote requires a simple majority vote. Using your handheld device, you can press green for yes, or red for no. You will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. You may begin voting now. Okay, voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board has passed with 224 votes in favor and 22 opposed. Article 22 is the next article, and it is on page 42 of your handbook. Article 22 on page 42 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the select board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Select Board Chair Mary Jane Mistrangelo.
We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $200,000 for the purposes of this article, and to meet this appropriation, to transfer the sum of $200,000 from free cash.
You have the floor.
Thank you. The town's financial policy for the general purpose stabilization fund establishes a minimum target of 6% of the general fund operating budget. This transfer of money into the fund will ensure the minimum target is met. As of March 31, 2025, the balance in the stabilization fund is $5,324,402.99. A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion would authorize additional funds to be transferred into the stabilization fund to stay within our financial policies. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that no additional funds would be deposited into the stabilization fund, and the fund balance would not be consistent with our financial policies. The select board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion on Article 22.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Carla Emmons.
The finance department voted unanimously to approve this article.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 22? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 22. This vote requires a simple majority vote. Using your handheld device, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board has passed with 238 votes in favor and 14 opposed. The last essential article, Article 23, is on page 43 of your handbook. Article 23 on page 43 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the select board have a positive motion on Article 23?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Mary Jane Mistrangelo.
We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $288,000 for the purposes of this article, and to meet this appropriation, to transfer the sum of $288,000 from free cash.
You have the floor.
Thank you. The goal of the capital stabilization fund is to maintain three to five years of debt payments in reserve and to save for capital projects. At the fall town meeting, house community fees in excess of the prior year budgeted amount are transferred to this fund. This transfer is needed in order to keep the fund balance goals. After the capital stabilization fund was used to pay the purchase of land for the Southside Fire Station at the January special town meeting, the balance in the capital stabilization fund is $1,742,424.53 as of March 31, 2025. A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion provides funding to increase the capital stabilization fund. This will help ensure the funds continue to be set aside for the long-term maintenance and replacement of capital assets. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would not provide additional funding for the capital stabilization fund and would not be consistent with the goal of maintaining three to five years of debt payments in reserve. The select board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion on Article 23.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Wayne Sampson.
The finance committee voted unanimously 7 to 0 to recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 23? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 23. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld device, you'll have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board has passed with 214 votes in favor and 11 in opposition. Article 23 was the last essential article of this annual town meeting. We will now draw articles through our lottery system. Article 26. Article 26 on page 46 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the select board have a positive motion on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Amory Sarunian.
We move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $50,000 for the purposes of this article, and to meet this appropriation, to transfer the sum of $50,000 from free cash.
You have the floor.
A yes or aye vote in favor of the motion provides funding for the one-time purchase of equipment that does not meet the capital threshold of $25,000. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion would mean that the town departments would sponsor individual articles at a future town meeting to fund non-capital requests for equipment. The select board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on this article? We do, Madam Moderator. I recognize Amanda Bond Giovanni. The finance committee voted unanimously 7-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion. Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 26? Seeing and hearing none, we could move to a vote on Article 26. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld device, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Green for yes, red for no. You may begin voting now. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the select board has passed with 187 votes in favor and 17 in opposition. Article 18. Article 18 is on page 38 in your handbook. It requires a simple majority vote. Does the select board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Peter Meyer.
We move that the town vote upon recommendation of the community preservation committee to raise and appropriate and reserve the sum of $400,000 for the reconstruction of Jason Carmoletti Memorial Basketball Court, located Bourne Veterans Memorial Community Center, and to transfer $400,000 from open space and recreation reserves.
You have the floor.
The recreation committee, as part of their ongoing commitment to improving community recreation spaces, has evaluated the need to upgrade the Jason Carmoletti Outdoor Basketball Court, located behind the Bourne Veterans Memorial Community Center, a tennis court. This area was repurposed in 2012, complete with perimeter lighting. Actually, that's incorrect. It was 2016. This court is heavily used throughout the year. However, the current layout often results in players waiting or leaving to find a court in a different location. Although cracks have been repaired over the years, the servicing is nearing the end of its life cycle, exhibiting 500 linear feet of cracking that measures approximately a half inch wide. These improvements will include a larger playing surface, an additional four basketball hoops, six total, and upgrades to the lighting of the court. To support this project, the committee is requesting $400,000 from community preservation CPC funding. A little bit of history with this is when we were looking at possible layoffs and closures, you know, back in 2015, 2016, it was I who came forward to the select board asking that we convert this tennis court over to a basketball court. The reason for this was is if we're gonna end up closing services to the community building for these kids, I wanted them to have a place that they could safely play. Now, as a result of this, is you see people all the time out there in the summertime, even in the winter, you can't keep these kids away. They are constantly, wherever they can, they're using this court. And the name Jason Carmoletti, Jason was a resident of the town of Bourne, went to Upper Cape Tech, who tragically died in an auto accident. Jason spent a lot of his spare time at that court, and it was because of that, the family went forward with a private petition for the naming of this facility. I think that moving forward, that this $400,000 is well spent, you know, and Jason's being, you know, in the memory of Jason, seeing, you know, him using, I think he'll be looking down on us saying how much he would be appreciating this, because a lot of kids do it. We keep them out the street. They're in physical, they end up staying in shape, and it's the least that we can do. We don't do enough for our kids in the community, and this goes a long way towards that. So, I support this article. A yes or nay vote in favor would provide the funding for the proposed project as recommended by the CPC. A no or nay vote opposed to the motion means that the funding would not be provided, and the project would not proceed at this time. Our select board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Does the finance committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Daniel Deegan.
The finance committee voted unanimously 7-0-0 to recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Deegan. You have the floor. Go ahead. Please identify yourself, sir.
Thank you. Jim Linsky, Recreation Committee, and I live in Pocasset. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for your patience. Some of what I might be saying could be repeated. You heard from Peter, but I'll try not to do that. Behind the community building, there's a very large recreation area with five, what we call, assets. There is a playground, there is an all-wheel park, there are two fields, a large one and a small one, and the basketball court. A new playground is being installed this summer. Funding for a new all-wheel park has already been obtained, and this project is in process. The basketball court is our next project here in this area. This court is in disrepair and is dangerous. As Mr. Meyer said, we have major cracks. The fence is too close to the playing surface. There is poor lighting. This project will redo and increase the size of the court, install two end baskets, four side baskets for practice, spectator and team seating within the enlarged fenced area, and improvements to the lighting. The Rec Department and Rec Committee has a vision here to establish league play and instructional play for youth, for high school, and for adults. The Rec Committee also has discussed establishing a summer league for high school players from surrounding towns. Currently, the only high school summer league is an indoor one in Hyannis. If this project is funded using CBA funds, one local high school head coach feels the summer league will be a huge success. Families will come to this park, youngsters will use the playground, young adults will use the all-wheel park, and basketball games will be played by all ages and all genders. And this will happen all at the same time. Is there a better way for your family to spend a summer evening together? Please vote yes on this article number 18.
Thank you, Mr. Linsky. Mr. Mealy, would you like to be heard on this article?
Yes, madam.
You go ahead, please.
Thank you. I'm confused on the wording of the motion. The wording of the motion says that upon the recommendation of the community preservation committee to raise and appropriate and reserve the sum, but it doesn't say where.
Okay, would someone?
Shouldn't it be coming from the?
Can someone respond to Mr. Mealy's question? Thank you. Town Administrator?
The full $400,000.
The full, the full $400,000 will be coming from the Open Space and Recreation Reserves, which is money that the town has already collected for open space and recreation purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy.
And I'm from Bourne, Massachusetts. I was Jason's varsity basketball coach, and you can see the emotion in my eyes and voice tonight. I'm also on the Rec Committee, and I also am one of the founding members of the Bourne Basketball Association, which is ages three years old through eighth grade here in town. I'm asking for your support because this particular court, though we have several around town, this is the court that all the children in town gather at. I'm a proud father of an eight-year-old boy, and every time we go to that court, I get to tell him about Jason. I get to tell my boys at the high school about Jason, and through a horrible tragedy, we're able to prevent more. So I ask for your support tonight, because this court is more than just a basketball court. This court is the heart and soul of our youth community and the basketball community. So please support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCouch. Thank you all. Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this article tonight? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 18. Article 18 requires a simple majority vote. Using your handheld device, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote. Please press green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 222 votes in favor and 5 in The next article is Article 21. Article 21 on page 41 of your handbook requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on Article 21?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Peter Meyer.
We moved that the town vote upon recommendation from the Community Preservation Committee to raise and appropriate and reserve the sum of $1,881,457.54 for the Community Preservation Fund Special Purpose Reserves listed in the Community Preservation Fund Committee report as printed below, and to meet the appropriations of reserves to appropriate the sum of $1,881,457.54 from fiscal year 2026 estimated Community Preservation Act revenues. Item A, reserves for open space, $1,463,355.86. Reserves for community housing, $209,050.84. And for historical preservation, $209,050.84. For subtotal reserve of $1,881,457.54. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion, and I'm going to fast.
Slow down.
Yeah.
We need a second, Mr. Meyer. You have the floor now, you can go ahead into your vote.
That's okay. Yes and a no vote in favor of the motion places anticipated revenues into a reserve account for the use at a future town meeting as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. A no or a nay vote opposes the motion means that the anticipated revenues will not be reserved at this time for future use. For more information about Article 21, please support the support and documentation in Appendix D. Our Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
Yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
I recognize Jim Sullivan.
Thank you. The Finance Committee voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on this article? Would anyone like to be heard on Article 21? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 21. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld device, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote, green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 183 votes in favor and 14 The next article is Article 15. Article 15 is on page 35 of your handbook, and it requires a simple majority vote. Does the Select Board have a positive motion on this article?
Yes, we do.
I recognize Peter Meyer.
We moved that the town vote upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to raise and appropriate and reserve the sum of $98,000 for expenses incurred by the Bourne Housing Partnership and the Bourne Affordable Housing Trust for various housing initiatives and to transfer $98,000 from the Affordable Housing Reserves.
Mr. Meyer, you have the floor.
The goal of this program is to provide a professional and administrative capacity to preserve and expand the town's current stock of affordable owner-occupied homes and affordable rental units, provide advice on new proposals to build affordable owner-occupied and rental housing, build and sell or acquire or resell homes to income-eligible households that would be held in perpetuity as affordable, assist in the town's efforts to meet the 10% goal under the state's 40B requirement, implementing the planning, regulatory, monitoring, development, and financial tools for the long-term creation and preservation of housing in Bourne. A yes or a no vote in favor of the motion provides funding for the proposed project as recommended by the CPC. A no or a nay vote opposed to the motion means the funding would not be provided and the project would not proceed at this time. The Select Board voted 4-0-1 to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Does the Finance Committee have a positive recommendation on this article?
We do, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Ms., I recognize Ms. Emmons.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously, I have a hard time saying that word tonight. Sorry about that, we voted 7-0-0.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone who would like to be heard on Article 15? Seeing and hearing none, we can move to a vote on Article 15. This vote requires a simple majority. Using your handheld device, you will have 30 seconds to cast your vote, green for yes, red for no. Voting is now closed. I declare the motion of the Select Board has passed with 164 votes in favor and 19 in opposition. All right. So at this time, with the hour being 10:00 PM, I would, at this point, entertain a motion to, what are we doing? Adorn to a fixed time, which is 7:00 PM tomorrow, May 6th, on 2025, at this location. I have, I have a motion in a second, I have a motion from Peter Meyer and a second from Anne Marie Sarunian. This is debatable, would anyone like to discuss? You can come to the podium if you'd like to discuss. Hi, Mr. Linsky, go ahead.
Jim Linsky, Recreation Department, how many articles do we have left?
That is a very good question, we have 13 articles. I feel like I can get through a lot in an hour, but not 13 articles and not giving them all they deserve. So I'm happy to continue, but I do not have a motion to continue.
Okay, so let's just do one, Article 18. No.
I appreciate your sentiment. Hopefully, it'll be the first one out of the lottery tomorrow. So we have a motion on the floor now to adjourn to a fixed time, which is tomorrow. If no one else would like to be heard on this, I'm going to, should I do this by vote? I'm going to do this vote by voice, okay? If all in favor of adjourning this meeting at this time and coming back here at 7:00 PM tomorrow, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I do hear a couple in opposition, but I declare the ayes have it. I will see you tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Thank you.